Hi, Nick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the municipality of Monroeville's regular council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 14, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. If we'd all kindly rise for the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father, to our hand, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. There is always temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call Sharon, please.
Mary Racinco.
Here.
Mrs. Gatos.
Here.
Dr. Griesock.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Johns.
Here.
Mr. Clary.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mr. Dice.
Here.
Mr. Lally.
Present.
Mr. Hugus.
Here.
Mr. Sedlack.
Here, President.
Mr. Chuffo.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, there's going to be a slight change on the agenda. We're going to bring the public hearing up, but I do want to read the executive session announcement into the record, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dice, our solicitor. Council conducted an executive session for personnel litigation on Tuesday, October 7, 2014, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Council's legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the October 14, 2014 council meeting. Mr. Dice, if you would.
Yes, this is the date and time set under the municipality's planning code and our zoning ordinance for review of a conditional use application. There are a couple on the agenda tonight. Two of them involve the temple. We're going to take up the temple first, then we'll take up the public hearing on the other matters, following the public hearing on this matter. Let me summarize at least a little bit of how I anticipate the procedure to be followed. There are four applications for the temple. One is for a conditional use for earthmoving. A second conditional use for landslide-prone and steep slopes. The third application for site plan, and a fourth application for subdivision. It's my intention to ask the borough staff to make a presentation of sorts, at least briefly, followed by the applicant being offered an opportunity to put on its position, and I see there, I believe there's a representative for the applicant here tonight to kind of jeopardize that presentation. And then lastly, any persons who wish to give testimony will be given an opportunity. And again, if there are spokespersons or people for those persons, likewise, I would like to hear from them first. I think it goes without saying, this takes on somewhat of a quasi-judicial proceeding. Therefore, while the rules of evidence are relaxed, redundancy, repetitiveness is not going to make a difference in this case. If I think that you're being repetitive or redundant in the comments, I'm going to interrupt you and indicate that this is redundant. And naturally, if you have something new to tell us, we're all ears. Council wants to hear that. Following all the testimony, my suggestion is going to be that if council has any questions of any of the witnesses, they can do so at that time. Once you've gone through that process, you will have satisfied the public hearing requirement under the MPC and our zoning ordinance. You could, if you chose to, make a decision tonight in your regular meeting on all four of those applications, or you should know that under Section 10913.2, the governing body must render a written decision, or when no decision is called for, make written findings on the conditional use application within 45 days after the last hearing before the governing body. If tonight is the last hearing before the governing body, you will have a period of time to deliberate on this, if you choose to. You could wait and make this decision at your next regular meeting, which will occur approximately 30 days from this public hearing tonight. With all that being said, is there anybody that has any procedural questions they want to introduce at this point? If not, we'll start with the borough's position. Seeing or hearing that. Mr. Chuffo, can you give us a capitalized version? You want to do it from up there or back here?
Bring the site plan up, put it on the board. It's on the backside. This is under Old Business. This is Application 12-2C, Shri Sherdi Sai Baba Temple Incorporated. The applicant requests conditional use approval pursuant to Section 401.8 of the Monroeville zoning ordinance 1443 as amended to permit a cut-and-fill operation of approximately 24,800 cubic yards of earth for site preparation and construction of a temple and related site amenities. Second conditional use application is conditional use Application 12-3C. Applicant requests conditional use approval pursuant to Section 204.1, conditional uses of the Monroeville zoning ordinance number 1443 as amended, approving a conditional use for a place of steep slope or grade. Application 12-4C was withdrawn by the applicant. So we'll start with the two conditional use applications. Pretty well self-explanatory. As part of the site development plan, the applicant has requested of council to grant a conditional use approval for a cut-and-fill operation of approximately 24,800 cubic yards of earth for the preparation of the temple, the roadway system, and the parking and other site amenities.
With regard to both of those, are there provisions, both in the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, that deal with steep slopes or landslide-prone areas?
Yes, there are.
And can you point those out so that council is aware of what those are?
Okay, under the Section 104, under Article 1.
Of what?
Community, excuse me, of Ordinance 1443.
And that's the zoning ordinance?
That is the zoning ordinance.
So that the records replete. We'll submit all of the applications that have been made, they'll be made part of the record, together with the zoning ordinance, and you can get the pertinent parts out concerning the sections that you're making reference to. I want to make sure that Mr. Ayub gets copies of all of those in the next, let's say, 24 to 48 to 72 hours, okay?
Should we mark it as...
You can mark it as an exhibit, but I'm going to admit that document into the record in its entirety, and you can extrapolate the important sections.
Again, Article 1, Basic Provisions of Ordinance 1443. Section 104, Community Development Objectives. The community development objectives, which are the basis for the provisions of this ordinance, are set forth in a comprehensive plan. The following is a supplementary statement of the purpose and intent of this zoning ordinance. These objectives are adopted as a statement of legislative findings and may be used in evaluating any proposed additions or deletions to the zoning ordinance. Section 104.1, "The general objective for the development of Monroeville is to provide a pleasant, attractive, healthy, safe, and convenient environment for living, working, education, shopping, and recreation. This objective shall be pursued by the creation and implementation of land use plans, too. Specifically, Section 104.2, the preservation and improvement of the environment shall be pursued by the preservation of natural topography and wooded slope lands, including limiting of hillside development beyond a reasonable gradient, and the control of floodplains and watersheds. Section 104.2, subsection D, the municipal acquisition of and the promotion of dedication of natural open space and wooded slope land in order to link the existing and proposed park sites and neighborhoods, and to prevent ecological problems resulting from extensive cut-and-fill necessary to develop wooded slope lands. Article 4 of Ordinance 1443, specifically Sections 401 and 401.7. 401, Conditional Uses. Conditional uses as specified in Table 201 may be allowed or denied by council after recommendations by the planning agency in accordance with the procedures set forth in this article. A conditional use shall be approved if and only if it is found to meet the following criteria: specifically, the proposed use shall promote the objectives of this ordinance and shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the municipality of Monroeville."
Now, is that all out of the zoning ordinance?
This is all, as per the zoning ordinance.
Do you likewise have the comprehensive plan?
I do.
And are there sections in there that deal with development constraints?
Yeah, there are.
And can you...
Monroeville Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2005. Section 6, Intersection Studies, Corridor Studies, and Recommended Improvements. This is page number 134. Northern Pike. "The Northern Pike Corridor between Pickarren Road and William Penn Highway, Route 22, is a minor arterial south and parallel to William Penn Highway and Route 22. It provides an alternative route for Monroeville residents and others to major shopping facilities along William Penn Highway." Now, I'm paraphrasing through, because I'm not reading the verbatim. "Northern Pike is primarily a two-lane roadway except at the major intersections where additional through and/or turn lanes have been constructed. The alignment of the road rate terrain and narrow right-of-way results in a long no-passing zones. There are few locations where access management can be improved. Also sidewalks are discontinuous. Some properties have them, others do not. The following improvements are recommended for the Northern Pike Corridor, including, and again, I'm paraphrasing, initiate strong access controls on existing and future development, limiting to number of driveways, encouraging joint driveways, and controlling driveway Increasing the traveling way from two three lanes is suggested for safety and traffic flow. The existing shoulders are narrow and may not even exist. Under these conditions, disabled vehicles may not be completely clear the through lane, forcing following drivers across the double-yellow line in order to proceed. Oncoming traffic may not yield in such an instance. Providing adequate shoulders is likely to be costly because of the terrain and narrow right-of-way. Providing a curb and gutter section can improve drainage control, particularly along grade down to William Penn Highway and Route 22. Curb and gutter would also expedite the access management for the corridor because the curb cut would need to be specified as part of the construction plans." This is pages 128, 129, 134, and 135 of the comprehensive plan. Page number 51, again, under the Monroeville Comprehensive Plan, Physical, Environmental and Physical Elements. Environmental and physical elements present in the municipality have a direct impact on future development, areas including steep slopes. Again, I'm not reading this verbatim. "Development constraints are defined as naturally occurring or human-created land conditions that limit development opportunities on a site. Certain areas should not be built upon because of the direct environmental impact. Others can be built upon, but only with extreme care and attention. The development constraints map, which is attached to this, groups together environmental and physical elements that may impact development opportunities. Table 7, which is attached, presents a summary of environmental conditions that pose primary constraints for development. Primary constraint areas include steep slopes, unstable soils, landslide-prone areas. These elements are the basis for the development of the constraints map. Areas that contain specific strands of trees are categorized as a secondary development constraint on Table 8. While they are not directly limited development, they are important considerations." And the maps are attached, specifically, map number 4. It does indicate that it is that area in which they are proposing to develop is part of the development constraints area within that map.
And that's all part of the comprehensive plan, is it right?
It's all part of the comprehensive plan.
Are there any other references to unstable soils or landslide-prone?
Yes. Page 55, Table 7, Development Constraints. Environmental conditions, category, steep slopes. Steep slopes are difficult to build upon. Building in a steep slope area often result in limited usefulness, direct accessibility, possible slide and erosion conditions, public infrastructure servicing problems, safety concerns, et cetera. Slopes over 25% should not be built upon. Extreme care should be used in building upon slopes of 10% to 25%.
Do you know what the slope is on this property?
Yes. It was a table, a map supplied by Martha Freck from Streamline Engineering. And, excuse me, one second. The application for the land development, site plan control, and conditional use, which was submitted by their engineer group for the Shri Sherdi Temple. There is no page listed here, but it is the Site Data Table. Their engineer has, the majority of the development is going to occur within Parcel 3, okay? Parcel 3 is made up of 22.755 acres. Of that 22.755 acres, she has determined by this table that 6.926 acres, she meaning her engineer, is greater than 40% slope. 4.45 acres is an area between 25% and 40%. Now, I will...
Sorry, Mark, what was that last one? Did you repeat that?
Yeah.
The...
Repeat them both, please.
Okay. This pertains to Parcel 3 only. It's a total of 22.755 acres. The lot area greater than 40% slope consists of 6.926 acres. The lot area consisting of between 25 and 40% is 4.450 acres. And then the remaining portion is not determined to be a, it would be a slope less than 25%, which is not determined. But I will, let me read this also, and it's, she did an analysis of the site. It says, and there's no page again, so I apologize. "The existing conditions of the site were considered during the site design. The primary restricting factor was the slope of the land. The majority of the Shri Sherdi Sai Baba Temple property consists of slopes exceeding 25% with many areas in excess of 35%. In addition, landslide-prone areas have been identified on the property. Therefore, the development was restricted to those areas with milder slopes. Other factors influencing the design, including and complying with municipal zoning, land development, stormwater management, and land disturbance ordinances." Getting back to the comprehensive plan on page 55. Unstable soils, landslide-prone areas, that's under the environmental conditions category. Building on unstable, unconsolidated, or shifting soil is not recommended due to a high construction cost as well as future stability problems, i.e. slumps, sinkholes, slides, et cetera. And from my determination on Map 7, which is attached, is page 60 of the comprehensive plan. There are four areas categorized on this map. It's buildup, dedicated areas, environmental constraint areas, and developable areas. And from my interpretation, it looks like this area is an environmental constraint area.
And you have copies of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Likewise, I would ask that we introduce that and make that part of an exhibit to the entire plan, and make sure that Mr. Ayub gets the pertinent sections that you read from. Is there any other sections that you feel are relevant?
Page 8 of the Monroeville Comprehensive Plan. Municipality of Monroeville Key Community Goals. Areas of Concern. Environment. This is page 8. "To continue to perfect environmentally sensitive areas and to support the preservation and expansion of green spaces within the municipality." Page 16, The Environment. Page 16, specifically Section 7. Growth Management Objectives. Enhance the quality of life through the preservation of environmentally sensitive areas, A, wooded areas, B, steep slopes.
Is that it? Okay. I also note that the engineering staff is here. Do they want to make any comments concerning the application, or do you want to wait at some point and offer testimony if necessary? Anybody from the engineering staff?
I will wait until, if needed, I can make a testimony.
Okay. Anything else?
Would you like me to actually discuss the applications for the subdivision and site plan?
Why don't you do a brief discussion of what the application's all about?
Okay, the application for the subdivision. Applicant is requesting subdivision approval to consolidate and revise a lot lines of four original parcels, 1, 2, 3, and 6, to create new Parcel 1, consisting of 36.64 acres, new Parcel 3, consisting of 22.755 acres, and new Parcel 6, consisting of .78 acres. This property is located at 1449 Abres Creek Road in S Conservancy, R2 zoning district. That's, you want to make sure that you know what districts these are in. This is an S and an R district, R2.
So it's split zoned?
It is split zoned. Portions, yes. With that said...
Bruce, I asked him to point something out on that map for a minute.
Yeah, with that said, a school or a church is a conditional use application under Table 201 of our zoning ordinance.
Could you, they showed that map again. I was going to ask you to just locate it.
Okay.
Where is Abres Creek Road?
Abres Creek Road, relied to the east of the project here. This is Northern Pike.
Okay.
Parcel 3, which the majority of the development is going to occur, is going to be a new temple. They're going to add a wing to connect the existing priesthood, and they are going to create a driveway approximately...
Where is Turnpike Garden?
Turnpike Gardens borders the property to the west and the south. Bart Drive. Any questions on the subdivision? I apologize, I skipped over. Let's go to the Site Plan 12-3ST. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 13,000-square-foot, two-story temple, 1,466 square foot addition, a 264-square-foot connecting wing, and four gazebo's totaling 15,140 square feet of building area and related site amenities. And again, this property is located at 1449 Abres Creek Road. Okay, this is a, it's probably a two-part. This might be a little bit better for you guys to get acclimated to the property. This is Northern Pike. This is to the north of the property. Abres Creek Road runs to the east. The yellow highlighted area indicates the connecting road that will provide ingress, egress, regress out onto Northern Pike. Follow the terrain and go up and provide access to the temple area, the parking facilities, and also to some of the existing parking areas that are available currently for the existing temple. Also, too, the roadway from Abres Creek Road will still remain intact. There will be a gate separating, so it won't be a drive-through, so you can't access Northern Pike driving through the temple roadway. They withdrew their application for the height of the spirey because they will not exceed, and they do, under the zoning ordinance, you don't take into consideration spirey, temple, elevator tower, or anything like that when you grant, when they seek approval for a building over top of the 35-foot maximum limit. So that's why they withdrew the application.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, it was a little bit. Under the zoning ordinance, there are provisions in there that council can grant a conditional use application if a building exceeds the height limit. Keep in mind, the building. When you have a spirey, an elevator tower, a steeple, the ordinance affords them to go beyond the height limit without you giving them conditional use approval. And that's what's occurring in this case.
Thank you.
Mark, on that map, the parcels, is it the dotted line that represents the complete parcels that they own currently?
Is...
Or could you outline?
I'd be better... What else? This would be a better indication.
Okay.
The, I don't know...
Just orient us again with the roadways.
This, oh, the roadway system?
On the map, just orient us quickly, just the roadways.
Okay, I'm sorry. Bart Drive?
Okay, I got you.
Okay. There's four parcels involved here. There's Parcel Number 1, which is 36.64 acres, which is highlighted in the yellow. I don't know if we can pick that up on the monitors. Parcel Number 3 is 22.755 acres. That's where the development is going to occur. Parcel 6 is highlighted in the green. That's approximately .768 acres. And there is a parcel that is outlined, it was a, we, I want to say, what was that, about four years ago? Four or five years ago?
Couple of years ago.
Okay. What had happened was is, they came in for an addition on this building. And I recognize the fact that in that zoning ordinance, you're only allowed to have one and one principal structure on any given lot. That was, there was more, there was multiple single-family structures within that parcel. So they developed this flag-shaped lot here. That is going to, they're going to absorb that into new Parcel 3, okay? And then what they're going to do is they're going to connect the existing priesthood to the temple to address the one structure per lot limit within that zoning district.
Are they going to do any upgrades to the...
Are they going to do any upgrades to the roadway from Abres Creek up that's existing right now?
Um, I think it'll be brought up to standards as far as lighting is concerned. And as far as I know, that would probably be all that I'm aware of at this point in time. I know there's no lighting there now. We made Martha provide a photometric plan that would include additional lighting to illuminate that.
Mark, the new access road?
Yep.
From Northern Pike up to the parcel three?
Yes.
Okay. What's the length of that road?
I don't want to misspeak. I don't know the exact length. I think we're looking at probably about 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Martha, can you correct me on that?
It's 1,400 something.
1,400?
1,450, I think, is what I remember.
Yeah, I would have to look the profile.
Okay. And why do they want to add that road?
I'm going to defer that question to the applicant. There's, there may be some reasons that I probably shouldn't address based on the type of facility that they want to construct.
So from, from Northern Pike?
Mm-hmm.
Up to site number three?
Yes.
Parcel number three. What is the elevation for that road?
I'm going to defer that to the engineering department, or Darren Meyer, I think we went over that.
The actual grade of the road, we could, I don't know if you have the profile, we can show that.
I don't know if I have the profile here to tell you. Yeah, Darren, it is here, I think. We determine it to be, what, about an eight and a half percent grade coming off of Northern Pike?
Is that the question, the actual slope of the driveway from Northern Pike?
Who will maintain that road?
That, that's theirs. That's, it's going to be a driveway, it's not going to be a roadway.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's going to, yes, there's a big difference.
Let me, let me just suggest something. As I stated at the beginning, I think if council has questions, they should address the questions to the relevant people after all the testimony is put in. Because I don't, I want you to get through this process and hear what everybody has to say first. Then, then it's time to ask questions. So again, I would repeat not to ask questions until that time. Write them down and just make notes to yourself to ask.
I'll wait.
I'm finished.
With that, the applicant, would you like to put on a presentation in support of your conditional use applications, plural?
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Ayub. I am the attorney for the applicant. I'll refer to the applicant as the temple. It'll be easier than pronouncing the full name. I want to make an opening statement, explain our approach and why we're here. Mr. Shufa did a fine job of stealing some of my thunder and outlining much of the application, so thank you, good job. So I'll try not to be redundant. You already heard from him the location of the property, how it's zoned. I do want to point out though, in your zoning ordinance, both the S Conservancy and the R2 single-family residential district, which, within which the property is located, allows as a conditional use, a church and school, as was already stated, as well as major excavation. So both are permitted conditionally. The use, I understand, is already approved. It's an existing church, so this is an expansion. We're really here for a, a public hearing for two conditional use applications. You know, obviously, a part of it is understanding the site plan and the subdivision, but those do not necessitate a public hearing. They just help you understand the nature of the conditional uses, which have accurately been identified as applications for a church and major excavation at a site with steep slope. And it's the major excavation and the steep slope that necessitate the conditional use and, the uses in the hearing tonight. It's important to note that the planning commission has made a recommendation to approve the subdivision, site plan, and both conditional use applications with conditions, and I may address some of those conditions as we continue on tonight. My client has been a part of this community. This isn't something new. This isn't a new use. My client's been in Monroeville since 1991. This temple provides spiritual, economic, cultural, and community services to the Indian community. It's actively involved. It donates to the food bank, it helps with cleanup projects. It's not a passive participant in your community. They're here tonight because their existing facility is in approximately 100 years old, and it needs to be upgraded so that they can more fully and properly serve the members of their faith community. They want to modernize the existing structure and, as was stated, have a worship center, an office, a meditation hall, and they want to have a kitchen as a part of it so that they can provide food for their various functions, like any other church meeting hall facility. I think what I hear questions about already is that there's going to be a new driveway, a new access road. It's not the proper word, it's a driveway for this site, and it's for the users of this site. It's not a public road, it won't be dedicated. You'll hear testimony tonight regarding that from the various professionals. But what you'll see, and I hope this story tells this, there's been a substantial amount of time and money spent by my client to establish full compliance with all of the municipal requirements and to let you know that this development not only is compliant, but is safe and doesn't impact the users of this property and those adjoining property owners. They've hired the Geo-Mechanics and Dr. Alvey, who supplied a report and an analysis dated November 25, 2013. They've hired Streamline Engineering and Martha Freck, who prepared all of the plans that have already been submitted. David E. Wooster and Associates, Inc. provided a traffic impact study, and in fact, one of the conditions references a letter by your own municipal traffic engineer indicating that it is acceptable and that there's compliance with your ordinances. Tri-State Design and gentleman Hiru Patel has provided structural consultation to the temple for the buildings that are going to be built, which you'll get more detail on that at the building permit application stage, but thought's already been given to that. Now, not to overwhelm you with all of these documents, I think what I'd like to generally do is just move into the record all previous submissions and the entire file that you have. This has gone on for a number of years now. There've been multiple planning commission meetings, multiple informal meetings with your professionals and the applicant and its professionals. And if we can just have all of that made part of the record, I think it'll make everything easier.
I agree with you, Mr. Ayub. Those will be accepted into the record.
Okay, thank you. The way I'd like to proceed tonight, I'm going to have Raghu Malalaya, the secretary of the temple, provide a brief overview of how the property will be used, just so you get an understanding of its use. And then I would like to ultimately have Dr. Alvey testify, and I may prompt him with some questions along the way, but I'm going to try to give them free rein to testify, so it's a...
Why don't you have them, you can be there and you can put them up there.
That would be great. And then finally, we'll have Martha Freck, and they'll testify as to the work that they've done and their understanding of the site and how the steep slope and the major excavation issues have been addressed and mitigated. So with that as my opening, if there are any initial questions, I'll be glad to address them. Otherwise, I will get to the witnesses. Okay, thank you.
Counsel?
Initially, just identify yourself, who you are, how you are employed, your role with the temple, and then if you can, and I'll try not to step on your toes, just explain how you propose to use the property.
Okay. My name is Raghu Malyalaa.
I want to spell that for the court report.
And I'm with the temple and the secretary. So as Mr. Ayub mentioned, the temple's been in the place since 1991. You know, our existing building is pretty old there, and we've had some additions, but now there's several repairs that have been done just recently. So, you know, what we're looking to have is, you know, to accommodate our growing congregation and also have more events, like community events, music classes for children, and also other activities that's not possible right now with our existing facility. Now, the other thing is, you know, we'd also like to have the new driveway. It gives us a couple of things. One is, it gives us access to the other rest of the property, so we can do the meditation, and that's why we have the proposed gazebo's there. The other thing is that also increase our safety by decreasing the time of any emergency vehicles coming to the property now. As discussed before, you know, right now, if we have a fire truck or an emergency vehicle come, that may not be able to make that sharp turn, which is over 180 degrees, the existing drive right now. So with this new access, you know, it'd be more safe for all of our members. Now, I agree also that, you know, with the other people that have mentioned that, you know, on Northern Pike, it is a steep road. I lived here a long time, I know that's a dangerous road, but by the same token, you know, that gives us a better access. And also, so I agree with the people that it is dangerous, but there are options that we have. You know, one of the things is, what, what have we've done with Temple David up the road? That was a very dangerous thing, but eventually, we've got a light there to slow people down because I know that a lot of people, you know, go through pretty fast over there as well. But there's some other things, you know, we can put other signs.
Well, let's address the use only, and we'll let the experts address the traffic and the layout of the site, please.
So, and then, so that's, that's the main thing, you know, our usage of the building, you know, we want to increase our activities, and we're not able to offer classes for our children right now because we don't have any classrooms. So with the new building, that'll have the classrooms so that we can have music classes and some other educational classes. And then again, some cultural events, which, you know, are not only for, you know, our members, but also open to the public. People that, you know, come from India would like to share, you know, the different dances, music classes, and so forth. And that, that's it, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Freck, please.
I'm just going to ask you a few questions initially, and then I'll just let you make your presentation. Can you identify yourself for the council?
Yes, I am Martha Freck. I'm president on our Streamline Engineering, a civil engineering firm. We've been incorporated for 10 years, and I have over 30 years of experience in engineering, civil engineering.
Could you identify or explain your education and qualifications for the board?
I have a Bachelor's of Science degree from the University of Pittsburgh. I graduated back there in 1984. I have continuing education courses, I attend continuing education courses mainly for storm water management and for erosion and sedimentation control, site development. I am a professional engineer of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, along with professional engineer in other states.
Now, you've prepared a number of documents for submission. If you could, just provide a brief overview of what those documents are, you know, the name and general purpose of them.
We've had multiple submittals, mainly our initial submittal was back in June of 2012. We, the, the submittal is the site development of the Sri Shirdi Sai Baba Temple expansion of the existing facility. We also submitted conditional use permits. We've, for steep slopes, for exceeding the height, and for the excavation amount on the site that we anticipate. We submitted a HOP highway occupancy permit with Pendot for the driveway access off Northern Pike. We've also submitted a application to the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, for the discharge of the water that would be coming off of, along Abres Creek Road. We could not cross the private owner on the, along Abres Creek Road, so we had to get a permit for submit, for discharge into Abres Creek, and so we received that permit also from DEP, Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask you to describe the project, the concerns with the slope and the amount of excavation and how they've been addressed, how the ordinance requirements have been satisfied, and to the extent you've already obtained, and I think you touched on some of them, approvals from other municipal entities, whether it be Pendot or DEP. Explain what was done and what approvals have been obtained.
Okay. The development is basically putting in a new temple, which is right located up here on this existing lot, having parking facilities around the proposed temple, having a wing connecting to an existing priest house, and to have a driveway that would extend all the way to Northern Pike, along with gazebo's along that area for meditation. As part of this development, we also designed storm water management features, a pond right here, right between the existing temple and the proposed temple, another big management pond along the driveway. The, we are in a release rate of 50%, therefore, whatever we, whatever is existing in way of storm water runoff has to be held back 15, 50% in this Abres Creek area, and Thompson Run is 60%. So right in this location, we have a divide, a drainage divide showing 60%. As for the submittals, we, of course, submitted the conditional use permits and the site development plan to Monroeville. We submitted an HOP for this particular entrance to the Pendot. We've had meetings with, a meeting with Pendot with all their safety signage, traffic engineers, and they did a review, there were two reviews, one a cursory review, preliminary review, and the other one was a more substantial review. They have, we have basically talked, talked to them, and they, I don't, I wouldn't consider it testimony, but they had, Pendot has stated that we do meet the site distance along Northern Pike, that's why we continued our avenue to go that route.
In fact, while you're talking about Pendot, were there, was there a traffic impact study provided?
There was, there was a traffic impact study mainly for Abres Creek Road from Wooster. As for the Northern Pike, Pendot waived that. He said that that was not needed, number one, because it's a driveway use, and number two, well, well mainly because it's driveway use, but the low anticipated volume of vehicles heading towards there. Pendot might be able to answer more why they waived the reason to have a traffic impact study on Northern Pike itself. But there was one on Abres Creek Road, and in that traffic pattern, or traffic study, Wooster did address the two driveway entrances as part of their study.
And that was submitted to the municipality?
That was submitted to Monroeville, correct.
And in fact, it was reviewed and, I believe, referenced by HRG in one of its review letters. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
And it is my understanding that this letter, compliance with this letter was made a part of the recommended approval by the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
And I believe that letter of January 10, 2014, provides that the, based upon the revised site plan and traffic impact study previously provided by Wooster, HRG does not anticipate any capacity issues within the study area.
And the reason being was that the original proposal that we submitted back in June, the structure, the building was a lot bigger. It was 120 by 100 foot, and we reduced it to an 81 by 81 foot structure. So at the time when Wooster did the study, they were looking at capacity for 120 by 100, by 100-foot expansion of the building. And so because we reduced it down in size, that prompted that letter saying that because of the reduction, that they did not see the need for any changes in their study.
And in fact, the letter also states that all previous review comments have been adequately addressed as stated in the previous HRG review letter dated November 12, 2012.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Continue, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. So with regard to steep slopes... So with regard to steep slopes, when we were doing this design back in June of 2012, like I said, there was a bigger structure, and it was encompassing some of the steeper slope areas, along with this ramp, and what we did, I recommended to my client, we must scale back, because we do have a sensitive area, we have to be a little bit more careful with our planning on this, and so they scaled back their building, and we have a smaller footprint, basically, for the development. What I did was I prepared this drawing to show, in orange are the steep slopes that are greater than 35 percent, and the yellow are the slopes from 25 to 35 percent. We are concerned about slopes that are steeper than 25 percent. As you can see, in this area that we're proposing, it's white. That means that we are in an area that's less than 25 percent. I also prepared a drawing, which we have included in the package, which is a profile of the site, and that site, and I just have duplicate here, and it might be hard to see, but what we have is the profile, which is cut right through the middle, right through here, and what we're showing is a profile of this, where we have the existing building, the proposed pond, this is at the
You can actually look at it facing me.
Okay, 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 makes it easier for me, okay. Where we have the existing building coming through here, with the pond behind, and we're heading up the slope, and here is the proposed building here. What we're looking at in this location, where the actual new building is, the average slope is about 13 to 15 percent.
And the site was intentionally designed to take advantage of the lesser sloped area for the structures?
Right, right in this location is a bench. It goes, the property goes up steep, and then there's a bench where the existing building is, and then it goes up steep again, a certain distance, and then there's a bench, and then it goes continuing up to a uniform grade. What we were saying, what we said is that we should really take advantage of that bench, and that's why we placed the building where it's at. With regard to a few other things, with regard to parking, we are looking at parking analysis, and so we came up with, I think it was 76 proposed parking spaces, and that was based on the dining hall facility, and also the gathering worship space.
Have you paced your, when they deal with the screen?
Okay.
It'll be easier for you, too.
Okay, well, I don't know if they can really see these numbers anyway, but the proposed development is to provide 76 parking spaces around the facility. We minimize that as much as possible to prevent, to minimize impervious area, and to minimize, basically, the developed area.
Did you still satisfy all the parking requirements for the proposed use?
Satisfied the parking requirements. With, in regards to that, I know that there were a lot of questions about the trees that will have to be removed in this location, and according to the zoning ordinances and to the development ordinances, that trees with dimers of 24 inches and greater are the ones that we need to inventory. And based on our inventory and based on this development and the footprint, we're anticipating only eight large trees to be removed. In that, part of that, we have to have a replacement ratio of basically seven to one if you have a small caliber tree being replaced, or if you have a larger three to three and a half inch caliber, that is reduced down to five to one. So what we are proposing are about 40 new trees to replace the eight large trees that we are removing. I don't know if there's anything else. With regard to the, I know that there was also questions about the site distance on the driveway. We staked out the center line of the driveway, 10 feet back, to look at the site distance. I do have some photographs of taking pictures from that location, looking what would be east and looking west, looking down the hill, down Northern Pike and looking up. What we have is 300 plus, the required for that, I have a, for Pendot's requirement for site distance for a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour. The requirement is 300 feet per 10 percent grade, and what we have right in this location is about a 10 to, let's say, 11 percent grade, it varies as you go up or down, yes. And so we have about 10 percent grade, and their requirement is 300 feet for site distance, or maximum site distance that we have, and I took a picture, we actually measured this off, we didn't pay, so we actually taped it to where 300 feet was, and you can tell that we still have about another 50 to 100 feet further back for site distance, and then further up, going up, we have about 350 feet. So we, we meet or exceed the required site distance for the posted 35 miles per hour for the grade that's located on that, on that drive, on Northern Pike. One other thing that I know
Let's stay on the driveway if I can, maybe I'll have a couple of questions. You heard earlier, I think there was a question, why is the driveway designed the way it is? Maybe you can explain how it's designed on the site and the location on the site.
Well, with regard to the location, everywhere along the client's property, Sri Shirdi, the temple's property, it's very steep. Looking through here, this is very steep, it's like a high wall, right through here is like a high, it's a high wall. Through here, right in here might have been something that, and we did explore this, but there was a major cut that was required to go through here. Right here is a steep high wall, up here is a steep high wall. Everywhere else is very, very steep. This is basically the flattest location that we're able to locate the driveway, without, with minimizing the cut that we would need to achieve the required grade for a driveway.
And as it's configured on the site, it's designed to be placed in the area in white, as you've described, the area that's not subject to steep slope?
Right now, the only steep slope that we basically have, which is that greater than 35 percent, is this small little segment, which we knew.
And then up top a little more, correct?
And the top, right, the top in this, this is steep because that's two tributaries that we're planning on putting pipes in, and to level that off a little bit. But there are this area, this area, and this area, but everything else, we try to keep in mild sloped area.
And the slope of the driveway as designed is compliant with the municipal ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
But one other thing I do want to say about the driveway, and with our profile, our driveway profile, I don't, I know it's in the package, is that from this location, from Northern Pike, we are proposing a 3 percent grade back down, so the water this may be coming down here, if it's not caught, we'll, we'll be sitting here, and then we'll drift off into what is that small little tributary. It is not planned or anticipated to run onto Northern Pike. We are, Pendot requires that they have a 3 percent grade back away from their travel lanes, and then you can start your grade up. And we had to do a vertical curve design, along with a horizontal curve design, to try to meet Pendot's requirements for driveways. They do not like a change of, a greater change of grade than 8 percent.
And this meets Pendot's requirements for driveways?
Yes, they still, we are going, they did give us a review letter, and we have to address the reviews, but they did not say anything about the grade.
And in fact, it's my understanding that the Planning Commission, as its, part of its proposed recommended approval, is that you comply with the comments from Pendot, correct?
Correct.
And that's something you intend to do as part of the development, correct?
That would have to be done before the development, correct.
Okay. Do you, you heard testimony tonight about the comprehensive plan and the requirements of the comprehensive plan?
I heard most of it, I was a little late.
Okay, are you familiar with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that the proposed development and the overall plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the municipality of Monroeville?
To my knowledge, yes.
There's a requirement that all major excavations shall comply with all pertinent sedimentation and erosion control regulations, and shall not endanger structures or other improvements on any adjacent property. Is it your professional opinion that you've satisfied this requirement?
Yes.
And has a significant amount of effort been done to address sedimentation and erosion control?
Yes, there is, yes. We still, we do have to go through the approvals from the conservation district, the local conservation district, but the, the way that they process, permitting process is, is that you have to have approval from the municipality for zoning and their planning before you can go in and apply for a permit.
So
But the, an erosion and sedimentation control plan was created, was, and it's part of this package, and it was reviewed by the township, or the borough, or municipality, I'm sorry. It's one of those.
You hear it all, Monroeville. Municipality's easy. Sure, so, and that's normal, and you're fully, it's your belief that you will fully comply with those requirements if made a condition to any approval?
Yes, that's required.
Okay. I don't have any other questions or comments, I don't know if we want to ask questions now or move on.
That's okay, let's move on.
Okay. I'd like to call Dr. Alvi, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Javed Alvi. I'm the president of a geotechnical firm called Geo Mechanics Inc., which has been in business for 46 years.
Let's spell your name, for the court reporter.
Alvi. First name is Javed, J-A-V-I-T, last name is Alvi, A-L-V-I.
Thank you.
Can you briefly just explain your credentials, your certifications, and your educational background?
I have undergraduate degrees from, two undergraduate degrees from Montana Tech, in geotechnical engineering and petroleum engineering. Then I have a PhD from University of Pittsburgh, interdisciplinary degree between departments of civil engineering and geology. And prior to starting with Geo Mechanics, I taught two years in the university, and worked two more years with another consulting firm in the Pittsburgh area. And since 1969, I've been the president of Geo Mechanics Inc., which employs about 45 people. And we've been working in this general tri-state area, Ohio, West Virginia, Southwestern Pennsylvania, most of our work is in this area. And over the last 46 years, we have done as much as 6,000 projects, not by my, all of it, but my colleagues also here. I have with me Andrew Lafferty, he was the primary author of the report which we submitted to you in November 2013. We were primarily retained by the temple to look at what are the geotechnical issues at this particular site. And the first thing we had to look was, what are going to be the grading plans to create the buildable pad for the building? Utilizing that map, which was prepared by the Streamline Engineering, we delineated the areas where we do have geotechnical, major geotechnical issues, and considering the topography of this area, it required cuts and fills to create the buildable areas. So when you make cuts, then you have to worry about the stability of the cut, and when you have to put fill, you have to be concerned about the stability of the fill and its long-term settlement. Those are the two primary issues which we had on this particular site. And we also were aware that some of the site is slide prone, because some of the geology and some of the soils on the top of the lithologic unit is such that if you make a cut into those one, you could create unstable conditions. So whole approach was to see how we could achieve those grading plan, and we all came to conclusion that we're going to have a series of retaining walls. And basically, the two types of retaining walls, we ended up selecting one was in the cut area, and we were not able to utilize retaining wall systems, which require initial cut into the hillside, and then you construct the wall, that's typically referred as bottom up construction, because the temporary cut caused a lot of instability in itself. So we have selected in those areas what they call top-down construction method, and soldier beam lagging is one of the method of doing it. It's a relatively expensive method, but it has the advantage that before you remove any kind of restraining forces by digging into the hillside, you have already provided a retaining wall system which has more than previously existing retaining forces, actually in a way, it's an improvement on the stability of the slope itself. Now, on the downslope side of it, most of the wall are in the fill, you have to put more fill, so we provided another system of retaining walls at the toes, so that you have water already there before you put additional fill on the top part of it. And those things were very thoroughly evaluated, we conducted almost about 21 boings all along that area, along the excess slope, as well as in the critical area where the buildings were supposed to go, and the retaining was supposed to go. Evaluating that area, ran series of laboratory tests to more accurately define the soil parameters and the rock parameters, which are used in the analysis of these retaining walls. And based upon that, analyses were conducted for each location, each critical area, and a report was presented in which it was taken into consideration some of the concerns the township had, and township, the consultant had it. We took each item over there and provided additional formation, did additional analysis to make sure those requirements are satisfied. Now, this is what you call the design phase of the project, but the design is just as good as the construction. So it's important that those ideas, those recommendations should be carried through the construction phase of the project. And as recommended by the consultant to the township, we will be involved if the project goes ahead during the construction phase of it. There will be some other issues which will be coming in, because it's still the preliminary stage you're talking about, there are going to be additional calculations and design which will be submitted to the township for their review. However, what I'm told, that the temple has committed to engage our services to carry through all the recommendations to deliver a safe project.
I'm going to ask just two questions. You already touched upon the construction of the site, and in fact, there has been, as part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission, a condition or requirement that the applicant shall submit copies of all geotechnical-related earthwork and foundation inspection reports, accompanied by compaction test results and other field testing, to the municipality concurrent with site earthwork, retaining wall construction and foundation construction operations. Those are the additional reports that you've indicated you would
Those will be during the construction phase, and there'll be daily logs, actually prepared by representative Geo Mechanics who'll be at the site, and those logs will be made available to the township, to the contractor who's doing the job, or anybody, anybody else who's involved with the project. And there, excuse me, and there'll be a weekly report also submitted on the activities we went we went on at that particular period. And at the closeout, there'll be a summary report submitted for all the work which has gone on, and it will address all the phases of the project. Earthwork, which we're talking about, compaction requirements, inspection of the foundations, where the building foundation is going to go, inspection of the installation of the retaining wall. And on the top of it, actually, we intend to have some instrumentation. We're going to install some settlement monitoring devices to make sure the embankments which are constructed are properly settled before we do any kind of construction work on it. All that information will be provided to the township consultant for review and comment.
Now, there's a requirement under the zoning ordinance that major excavation shall not endanger structures or other improvements on any adjacent property. Do you believe that the design of this site is such that it will not endanger structures or other improvements on adjacent properties?
Well, the only really concern with adjacent property on this side is really the stability. And as I mentioned to you already, because, and they're primarily in the cut areas. And we are providing, I mean, our client, Temple, is providing a series of expensive retaining walls to make sure that we don't induce any kind of movement up slope from the project area.
So the design provides for safe development of this site?
That's correct.
And during the construction phase, provided the monitoring confirms that the construction adheres to the design, then the construction would also be such that it would provide for safe use and development of the site?
Which includes township's requirement.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have no further questions.
Hey, any other witnesses?
I have no other witnesses. I just would like an opportunity to make a few brief comments at some point in time
Sure, when we.
Towards the end. And to the extent there are questions for any of the three witnesses that I presented, they're available for questioning.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, maybe Sharon, how you doing?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I know. I'm checking over here. I'm okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
As I indicated at the beginning, you've heard from the municipality, now you've heard from the applicant, are there any residents that care to offer testimony on this condition, on the two conditional use? First, the earth moving, and second, the landslide prone and, landslide prone to steep slope issues? Good, you go. Okay, wait, 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 wait. Let me, let me direct the traffic here. Let's raise hands, see, let me see how many people. If you don't raise your hand now, you don't get a chance to talk.
Mine's due.
Okay, I just, I want everybody to understand that. We're not going to, contrary to how the mayor runs a meeting, we're going to run it this way. Okay, so I'm going to take it, go ahead.
You had people raise their hands?
No, no.
And it just reminded me that the witnesses needed to be sworn.
I, I don't see anything in the statute that does that, but I think it's a safe, it's a safe thing. Anybody that.
Has testified.
Has testified or intends to testify, please stand and raise your right hand. You, are you able to get, okay, everybody up? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you.
All right, raising hands from the back front. I think you're the furthest back, sir. Got you. You want to first state your name and, and address?
Which?
Not address, but state your name. That's fine.
Doesn't matter.
Either one.
Good evening. My name is Eric Roberts. I'm a resident of Turnpike Gardens, specifically Burt Drive. And just listening to the testimony from tonight, I just have two questions, well, actually, one question, because I hear the terms cut, fill, sediment, unstable, sensitive areas, you know? I share a property line with this temple in question, and I can look out my kitchen and I can see the temple every day. So the things that are going on, going on are something that's directly affecting me, my family, and my neighbors. So the question that I have is what steps are being taken to protect my property, my neighbor's property? And also, what plans do the applicant have to reach out to us? Those are my two questions. I'd like to show as well, there's a picture. Sure, if I put this here, if you can see it. Zoom in.
Should we take those other ones off so he can see it clearly?
Why don't you move the other one out of the way?
May I do that for you, Eric?
Sure, yes, sir. Thank you. It's not a great picture, but this is a picture of the back of my house. This is my back gate, and the area here where you see the trees, this is basically a slope that's going right down to the gate that I share with the temple. So I understand there's a retaining wall that's protecting the temple, but what steps are being taken so that there's no unstable movement on my property and my neighbor's property? Because I understand that we live in an area known as the Pennsylvania Red Beds, where landsliding are issues that happen. These are things that have happened in the past. So how does it make sense to do something that's going to make the issue of landsliding worse in the name of what we want? My question again is what steps are being taken to protect the neighbors of Burt Drive? And when are you going to reach out to us? No one has reached out to me or my neighbors. I haven't received a visit, a letter, or a phone call about something that's going to affect my property. Thank you.
Let's raise our hands again and see who's further back. Ma'am? Nope, further back.
Good evening.
If you could sign your name too, please.
There's a pen on the side.
There's one on his side, too.
Just a little comic relief tonight. My name's Teresa, or Terry Krentz. I live at fourteen forty Abers Creek Road at the base of the temple's driveway.
Want to spell your last name again?
Krentz, K-R-E-N-T-Z.
I spelled that right.
Do I need to write everything here, or just?
Just your name.
Okay, thank you. I spoke last month, and I have the same concerns. Martha spoke to the DEP putting a drainage system in place, so I was curious to learn a little bit more about how that'll secure my property. Could have Burt Drive, the temple, and no creek if things slide downhill. So I was curious at learning more about that and what measures are taking place from the, will the bottom entrance, or the current entrance on Abers Creek Road, still be a throughway to the temple even though there'll be a gate, or will it just be to the residents that are up there? Because there are several homes up there. So those are my primary concerns. We currently suffer a lot of runoff from the existing property with previous renovations that may have occurred prior to us buying the property in 2011. I understand there was a landslide there several, maybe a decade or so ago, that closed the road off for some time before I was a Monroeville resident. Curious as to, as to whether or not that's a risk that we may be facing with the construction going forward. I appreciate the information provided, and hopefully we can get some answers to that. Thank you.
Mr. Dice, can I ask her a question before we lose her?
Okay.
I just wanted to ask you where your home's located.
Fourteen forty Abers Creek Road, and I also own fourteen forty-eight Abers Creek Road. The two properties, the, the creek side of Abers Creek, the only two houses that are between Northern Pike and the entrance to the driveway.
Thanks.
Hands up again. Ma'am?
My name's Diane Rhodes. I am a resident of Monroeville, and I live at forty-seven thirty-sixth Burt Drive. And that's the block of Burt Drive that, that directly faces the slope with no homes across the street. We've owned that house, my family, since, since I was four years old, and I won't go into how long that's been. And I've been down that slope many times voluntarily and involuntarily when it was just rocks. And I wonder if the, the retaining walls won't make that slope more stable than it is right now. My understanding is that when the houses up there were built, the top of that hill was shaved off, and all of the debris was dumped down that slope. And when we moved into that house, nothing grew on that hillside, not even weeds. It was just rocks. So I'm wondering if, if the, between the, the vegetation that is on the hillside and the retaining walls that are being proposed, won't that hillside possibly be more stable than it is right now? And the other thing is, I'd like to say that I'm in favor of the driveway because I drive past the driveway that they have right now on a regular basis. And if there's a fire down there, I cannot imagine a truck, a fire truck getting up that driveway in any kind of a timely manner. And if those trees catch fire on that hillside, that's coming right up the hill to me in mind. So fire is a concern to me, and, and that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Okay, I think we're up to the front row. Who's got their hands up? Sir?
My name's Stan Pittman. I'm a resident of Monroeville. And we've heard of, from the comprehensive plan and ordinances, the criteria for constructing in a steep slope area this evening. But this area is not just only steep slope. It's also landslide prone by virtue of indicators beyond slope. This is, this area is known for the presence of red beds and landslide prone bedrock. And we know that the area has been identified as having prehistoric landslides and that it remains landslide prone. We know there's a presence of groundwater and visible water seams. There's minimal vegetation, trees that are decayed, leaning, they're twisted, they're scarred, and they have exposed roots. Beyond that, they're being choked and killed by an overabundance of vines on the property. There are downed trees all across the property. If you walk the property, there's a presence of a buildup of soil at the upper base of most of these trees. That tells us soil's moving from above down the hill already. Now, the proposal is to cut approximately twenty-four thousand eight hundred cubic yards at the toe of this landslide prone property. I understand this will be what they call a controlled cut, meaning they're going to build retaining walls. They're still will be removing, cutting twenty-four thousand eight hundred cubic yards of soil from an area that is saturated with shells, claystone, red beds, and colloidal soils. The twenty-four thousand eight hundred cubic yards of cut soil is happening, don't forget, at the toe of this sloped property. Research indicates that one of the primary reasons for landslides in Pennsylvania is disturbance at the toe of such property. Other causes are excavation of an unstable slope. We know the soil's moving already. Disruption of surface or subsurface, it means removing soil or trees, both are going to happen. Drainage, remove, and vibrations of heavy traffic. And I, I mentioned this at the last meeting, and the comment was, there, there's trucks and cars up and down that road already. I'm not talking about road traffic, I'm talking about heavy machinery. I don't believe you're going to move twenty-four thousand eight hundred cubic yards of soil with a shovel. There's, there's going to be machinery in there. In addition to those concerns, quite frankly, the proposed entrance is just a bad idea. I realize that's my opinion, but I have privy, I have the privilege of stating that opinion because I travel that road routinely. And I can tell you, that will become an accident waiting to happen. If this is penned out approved, then perhaps they should revisit their criteria. Or better yet, maybe we ought to fix that road so it's not, doesn't remain an ice skating rink all winter long. Right now, the drainage is so bad on it that it's only going to contribute to the bad situation that we're creating here. The sightlines are bad, traffic moves along that road, and someone's going to get hurt. The buffer zone, it's in compliance with Monroeville's standards, however, they're not sitting on my deck. I can see the lights right now without any additional construction. I can hear what's going on down there right now without any buffer. It's going to get worse. I guarantee you that the lighting will be sorely evidenced from the top of that landslide prone hill. The project's going to be phased over five years. I dare say that no one wants to endure five years of the sounds of ongoing construction. That's what we're going to be obligated to, listening to this for five years. On a personal note, I moved to Turnpike Gardens in nineteen eighty-three. We purchased our home there for a lot of good reasons. One of those reasons, because it was a nice, friendly, and quiet neighborhood. I don't want to wait five years for it to return to that state again. I'm not out to prevent something that could be beneficial, but I do have serious concerns for an investment that I've put over thirty years into. Our neighbors are great. We try to accommodate one another. Quite frankly, we haven't seen that with the temple. For example, their, their, the fence that they put up, they could have put that along the wood line. We pleaded with them to do that. It was an eyesore from day one, detracting from all the homes on Burt Drive, especially mine. Goes down the front, all the way up to the driveway, and straight down there, puts right up against my property. It's terrible. It devalues my property. There is nothing to be gained by placing it where they did, right down the middle of the field. A neighborly thing, a neighborly act, as the neighbors are in Turnpike Gardens, would have been, just move it up against the wooded, wooded area. No big deal. Nothing, little loss. And my last remark comes along that line. Retaining walls and all the other construction is not done with the homeowners in mind or our property in mind. It's done to protect the construction site. I understand that, but I'm concerned for the properties above the site, along Abers Creek, and the motorists traveling Northern Pike. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sarafini.
If you could sign in, please, sir.
Surely.
Thank you.
Sorry. Like I said, I've been a resident of Monroeville since nineteen eighty-six. I pay my taxes regularly, in fact, I're even paid before the deadline. I contribute to the charities much as they do, so I think we'll set that straight, there won't be an even keel there. Okay, I would like to thank the temple, first of all, for that twelve-four C for canceling the spire, which was in the excess of the fifteen feet. I think that was a great, great consideration. I thank them for that. Now, my one thing is, all through the two years that they've been doing this planning, they've been going from a four-story building, which was the first time, and they said the application was for two floors. The last meeting I had with the engineering department, I believe it was only a one-floor and a, and a basement. Am I correct on that? The two floors?
Basement and the first floor.
Basement and the first floor. That's, that's not a two-story building, is it?
It all depends on whether.
I can't hear you.
I said, that's not a two-story building.
I can't hear Mark.
He can hear Mark.
The elevation drawings show that.
The elevation drawings show that the first story will be exposed more than 60%. What that means is, is only 40% of the foundation will be covered with earth. So, with the 60% exposed, that's classified as one story, even though the majority of it's going to be below ground. I'm sorry, the minority of it will be below ground. Then you'll have a second story on top, and then the.
Is the basement to be used as a, a learning center? Is, is they've stated they want to use it for?
Yeah.
Or is that for storage also?
No, no, that'll be utilized as they wish when they construct it.
Now, like I said, they've gone from four stories down to a basement and one story. They've said that they want to connect the home, which is above the temple, down to the temple. That was four stories. That's how they wanted to do it then. How are they going to do it now that it's knocked off about, I think it was 18, 14 feet, about 32 feet? How do they plan on connecting it now? That's a question I have. Do they raise the building more? They dig it up? I don't know. They can't move the host on, it's already there. So, how are they going to connect these two buildings? That's my one thing. My second question is, over a year ago, I asked the question, was there any possibility of dynamite being used on the property to remove some of the rock? Which is a very unstable, that shale rock, which moves every time you touch it. I was told no at that time. During the last planning meeting, which occurred six, six, eight weeks ago, which was on August 20th, out in the hall, the gentleman who was up here before, Raghu, stated the fact that they may use dynamite. I'd like to have something in concrete on that. Do they intend to use that or not? I mean, it's fluctuating on that. Dynamite's a very, very unstable thing when you put it into a hillside to try and move stuff. I mean, it's not like you're, you're taking a shovel out, you see something move, you stop. Dynamite, when you put it in there, it jolts the heck out of everything. There's no stabilization to dynamite. That's one question. Now, on number 12-4 sub, does the consolidation of parcels one and any of the subs allow, do they allow any extra trees to be cut? In 12-4 sub?
The only trees that will be cut will be part of the development of parcel three.
I think you also stated the fact that if that was to be cased, the 119 trees that were being cut, there should be someone there to oversee that?
Yes, we will make sure that there's someone there on site from the day that the application is bonded till the duration, five years out.
Okay. So, I'd like to have a question about the dynamite sometime tonight, if someone could give me an answer when further questions are answered. Okay, a few facts I'd like to point out. The temple currently has only 10 to 50 people who attend any of the various services. This has been stipulated to the engineers. And in a book they gave to the engineers, they stated they do not expect to get any further resident, people because of the fact of the other two temples in the area. Now, I just want to point out, that's not a lot of people that we're considering on. Okay, the current driveway off Abers Creek Road is in good shape and is being used at the current time. The only objection was brought up at the planning meeting by Poon Doo was the buses could not make a right-hand turn off of Abers Creek Road onto the temple driveway. They had to go up to Abers Creek Road one minute and turn around in the field and come back. Poon Doo only, also stated that there were only three to four buses that were used there last year. I admit, buses do have a small turning radius, and that only, like I said, three, four buses a year, I don't think that's much of an inconvenience. Mr. Yugas at the same planning meeting also stated the fact that fire trucks, when he was in there, did get up that road from Abers Creek Road, making a right-hand turn. Fire equipment did make it. So, that's a fact I'd like to point out, that if that lady was worried about fire equipment. Now, my big objection is the long unnecessary and unsafe driveway. The cutting of 119 trees on landslide prone soil, plus the shale rock, along with 24,800 cubic yards of dirt, which they want to remove, is asking for big troubles for the homes up on Burke Drive. The proposed driveway is 1,450 feet. That's five football fields, if you want to just try and imagine five football fields long. With 800 feet of it being level, and the last 650 feet of it being graded down towards Northern Pike. Water now runs onto Northern Pike from the property, which has a bunch of springs on This causes the snowplows in the wintertime to go up the hill to salt the road because they can't go down it. It's very icy. The water from the driveway will only add to this problem. William Lestrick, supervisor from Pendot, stated in the memo of July 13, 2012, quote, "As much water as possible should be collected on the driveway." That's not saying all of it, it says as much as possible. The exit from the driveway onto Northern Pike is an accident waiting to happen. Last Sunday, Mr. Greco over here, and I went down to Northern Pike, and I thought of something that I don't know if anybody's even thought of before, but I took some pictures, and I took duplicates all of these pictures. And when I'm saying duplicates, I took them one right after the other. So, if you want to say, "I took a picture," then I took another one, that's the way I took them. Joe, can I see the pictures from before when we had that, please?
Sir, I, I cannot do that tonight.
Why is that, sir?
I don't have them ready. I wasn't aware that they were going to be asked for.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Well, let me show you the ones I took. The ones that were up there were from when they did the gas lines and so on. They showed a big curve up above. I'd like to show some of the pictures, like I said, we took last Sunday. How's that one, Joe?
Move it up a little bit.
There you go. You can just slide it up a little bit. There you go.
Okay, this is Mr. Greco's car that we parked in the site where they're going to have the driveway come out. I only parked it there, had used his Terrain Vehicle because of the fact it's a four-wheel drive. And I didn't want to take my car down there because most of the time that spot is wet. So, because it's wet. Now, that's where his car is parked. Remember that spot, please. I show you this where Mr. Greco, where we parked the car. From the white line back to the bumper of Mr. Greco's car is only six feet, which I think is appropriate place to come out when you're coming from a driveway, to look up and down the road to see where you're going. This is a picture taken from standing in front of the front bumper of Mr. Greco's car, which is at the very front bumper of his car. You can see up the road there, there's only one telephone pole. Now, the other pictures showed the other telephone pole, which is equal distance from that one to where we are, but it has a very poor sight of line there. But that's going up to the telephone pole. From that same telephone pole, looking down at Mr. Greco's car, what do you see? Hardly anything of it. There's only the front bump, uh, front fender you can see, and that's very limited. Now, sitting back from the bumper, if you, any car, generally, you're anywhere from six, eight, nine feet, sitting from the bumper to where your line of sight is when you're standing behind your steering wheel. So, this is what I took. This is that road parked in Ralph's car, looking up Northern Pike. So, if you're acting six foot, which is the safety barrier from the front bumper, and seven feet from the front of Ralph's car to where I was sitting, you can see there's a mirror in the lower left-hand corner, so you know I was looking out that window. So, that's very poor vision. And like I said, when I started this, I took two pictures of every frame because I didn't want to miss any clarity on any of them. So, I went to take my second picture of the same thing, looking up the road, and by the time I got my camera to snap, look what was on top of me. That's less than two or three seconds. That car was on me. Now, that's not very, very good visibility. And like I said, I don't know how Pendot could say they did, wasn't, our road study wasn't necessary, when you've got poor visibility like that. Now, that's all I have to say, but I think that driveway is very, very bad. I think cutting all those trees, cutting, moving, moving the dirt is equally as bad. I think it's just a poor feasibility to do this for the temple, especially when they have a driveway that works. Thank you.
Okay, there are no other hands up, so we will, nope, you already did it. You have something new that you want to say?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to seek clarity on.
If you could say your name again, Teresa.
Teresa Krenz, thank you. I just wanted to seek clarity on the withdrawal. That, does that mean they're not putting it up, or does that mean they don't need approval to put it up?
That means that they don't need a conditional use of approval.
I can't hear you, Mark.
Sorry, Sharon. That means that they do not need a conditional use of approval by council for the spire to exceed the height limit.
And is there information related to how far the light will shine? That was what I'd like to add. Thank you.
Okay. With that, the, you want to make a, a closing statement?
Well, a closing, I can address some of the questions, too. I think that might be easy. I'll ask Ms. Freck to come up. Yeah, I've already been, and everyone screamed in my ear next to me who I represent, there will be no dynamite on the site. It's not intended to be needed for the excavation. Before I, I think I, with a few pinpoint questions, can address many of the comments and concerns, and I'll try to do it in the order they were raised. I do just want to point out one thing, that the last witness, Mr. Sarafini, was reading from a Pendot memo, and then he immediately went into, I believe, his comment, that an accident is waiting to happen at the intersection of Northern Pike and this driveway. And it's, he made it sound like it was from the memo, and I just want to be clear, the Pendot memo.
We're not doing that.
Did not include that.
I understand.
And it's part of your record, and you can take a look at that, okay? The first witness asked, what is being done to protect us? I can briefly tell you that all of the experts that you've seen who testified here tonight have prepared all of the plans in accordance with your requirements and other municipal entities' requirements to ensure that the development is fully compliant and safe. To the extent you need any testimony to address that, you know, Ms. Freck can, you know, reaffirm that as to how the site's been designed. I'm going to ask her, the second witness asked, how drainage system will protect downstream properties or other properties, and I'll let you address that question.
Okay, from what I understand, Krenz lives right here at this location. If they can put the camera on the, the drawing. She lives right here. Here's the entrance, the existing entrance. Oh, was that, oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Okay, here's the existing entrance. Here's where Krenz lives. There's another house here. What we're talking about is drainage system, basically, that's coming down in here, that comes down to Abers Creek Road. This had to be collected onto Abers Creek Road. Now, right now, there is, there really is no drainage system on Abers Creek Road, except for one small little catch basin that's right here, and it's, it's clogged, and really not servicing a whole lot right now. But the water comes down this hillside from this pond, and it comes through here, and really, we have this rock channel, and most of the, from the detention system, most of that water is going to be sort of hidden in that rock. But whatever's going to come out onto Abers Creek Road had to be conducted over to Abers Creek. And what we are proposing is a storm pipe that comes all, all the way across here, and then discharges into Abers Creek. This is our, this is Sri Shirdi's property across on the other side of Abers Creek Road. As you can see, it will not impact these two homes whatsoever. And again, I want to reemphasize that we have a 50% release rate. So, if your pre-development's 100 CFS, your post-development down to this location has to be 50 CFS. And that includes even the area that's even wooded, and that's why we have this great big detention facility for wooded area. Now, above our property that we are developing, even though Sri Shirdi owns this, we're not developing that location. And can I please add that one drawing? Okay, I, okay, right here, what we are proposing, this is the, basically, the driveway location. This span, this wooded span is about 500, 600 feet. We're not proposing to do anything but keep the wooded area there.
And that separates Turnpike Gardens from the proposed roadway, that area, correct?
Yes, this, this wooded area does. And, you know, one other thing I want to emphasize is that the, the upper area of the Turnpike Garden, with regard to safety, believe me, if I was an engineer, which I am, the safety of these people from a slide is probably most, that probably, the one that will probably get hit first are the people who will be in the temple itself. So, we have to have, we do have to monitor the construction, we do have to be very, exercise care in what we're doing here, because they will be the first ones that will get hit. The, so, in which case, with regard to the drainage, I think that Ms. Krenz's issue, I don't think is, is, is a problem. Right here, we're not proposing much more than what is already at that point. And like, again, we have to go 50% release rate.
And while we're talking about drainage, the fourth witness, I think Mr. Pittman asked, or commented, that the project will contribute the drainage on the road, as you testified to. It will, it's not designed to drain onto the road, correct?
No, I could have a profile, you have that set of drawings, correct? Right here, as you can see, there's a small dip. This is Northern Pike, right here. It says Northern Pike, edge of pavement. We're proposing, I said 3%, I'm sorry, it's 2% grade back away from Northern Pike. So, anything that's coming through here would be hitting this low point, if, if it, we have drainage, we have rock trenches along the side of the road, along with catch basins, and there is a small little stream that goes right at this location. That's why we have this, there's an existing, oh, this is a proposed 18-inch culvert. So, at this low point, that's where we're proposing to gather our drainage, to avoid any drainage from our driveway onto Northern Pike.
A couple other comments, the third witness asked if the retaining walls will actually make the slope more stable. Are you able to comment on that?
I, I will answer that, but I, I would like to really have Dr. Alvey answer that, since he is a geotech engineer, and that's his field of expertise. But if you have a, what I, and I do know this because I'm a civil engineer and I took geology, you have red beds. They are inherently an issue, but they're always an issue. And it doesn't matter what you do, that they could be an issue. And when you put in retaining walls, those are like, this is the only analogy, so forgive me, but it's like keeping, putting a belt on your pants to keep them up. Okay? And so, that, these are ways to try to keep the site stable. Dr. Alvey, would you like to expand on that?
I would like to make a few comments. Actually, some of the remarks I heard, they are so general remarks without really any basis. The statements thrown about red beds, they're going to be blasting, they're so steep. Actually, there is only an area above that the development we're talking about, considerably above, that's where red beds, red beds are nothing, they're. They're a type of rock which has low strength. That's what red bed, and you have a series of different kind of strata, which you've got sandstone, siltstone, claystone. Red bed is a claystone rock. And the lower portion of the site, actually you don't have any claystone. Most of it is either sandy shale or sand snow. That's why you're such steep cuts slope along the roadway. You could see the rock over there, there's no red beds over there to start with. There's only limited area where the red beds are located. And red beds themselves have definite thickness involved. We're talking about maybe 20, 25-foot thick rock formation, which is considerably above the site itself. So when you talk about red beds, you know, you, you have to say, to, we were aware of that one, that information is available. That's the first point, we look at it before we start an investigation. But we have site-specific borings done on the site. We know exactly what kind of material we have, and we're utilizing the parameters of that material to come up with answers. I would like to show some of the concern, what's going to happen way up over there. I think it's important you to realize, what's the geometry of this one in terms of the whole hillside? Could we zoom this one possibly on this one?
Let me take this off, so you have a better focus.
We have drawn a series of geologic cross-sections through that retaining wall cut area on the upper side of the slope. The height of the retaining wall we're talking about is probably anywhere between six to about 12 feet. That's all we're talking about. And the area which we disturbed up slope is not going to be more than 10 feet. We're talking about 300, 400, 500 feet way up over houses. There has absolutely no relevancy what you're doing at the bottom of that hillside. And statements make over there, what are you going to remove so many thousand yard? That's not right statement either. If you look at the development itself, let me, please, I'd like to look at the drawing again. This entire access driveway we got over there, this actually minimum amount of cotton fill involved. If you look at the proposed grading plan, the amount of dirt which will be excavated from here is not that significant. And on the top of it, by proposing to construct a retaining wall, the amount of excavation is going to be very small, around the entire length of the access driveway. Bulk of the material will be excavated right where the building is going to be. And when you put a basement, you have to excavate it. That's not any difference than to somebody else's house with a basement over there. So it's not new thing over there. So, I, I want to, I think a lot of misconception involved in this one, that bed, that bed, and to dig at the toe, something going to happen. You dig at the toe in the good sandstone rock, you could have much steeper slopes than what we, what we are proposing over here.
I think this will demonstrate what you were talking about, where the steep slope is located on the roadway.
Yeah, and look, the steep roadways are right over here. All these are much steeper than any one of the proposed grading plan we got over here. And if you look at this road over here, there is only minor cotton fill involved on that one. And that house we're talking about, if you look at the site, from here, the house is way up over there. Are you talking about 500 feet up over there? The area which would be, by cutting a 10-foot of material with the retaining wall, it's going to be a few feet of that material which will have an influence on it.
I'm, just a few more, and I'll make it quick. Uh, there's a, somebody made a comment that the proposed, that the development is proposing to cut the toe of the hill. Uh, and I'd like to see if either one of you or both will address whether or not the toe of the hill is being removed.
The toe of the hill, right over the red, red, red area. If you look at that one, that's the toe of the hill. What we're talking about is just a small area over here, that's where the, our cut is going to be involved in development there. And other cut you're talking about is just along this one, and those are 10 feet, 12 feet deep cuts. There are no major cuts involved, and they're not in the toe of the existing hillside. It's in the middle of the area where the top graph is relatively flat, as Martha mentioned, that's already on it.
Just have two more comments. Just reaffirm, testimony was that all Pendot sightlines are adhered to and satisfied by the proposed driveway?
Uh, yes, and, um, yes, I-
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
Okay.
And I think, I mean-
One, one thing I do-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One thing I want to say about, because I did take pictures and showed the 300-foot distance from the driveway, and I don't have to really show that right now. However, remember, the site distance is coming from the center line of the dri, of the road, not from the, the shoulder. For example, one of the residences had a, a picture saying, "From the shoulder, what can you see? You can hardly see the bumper." But that's not the driver. The driver is in the center line of the dri, of the road. So therefore, there is a bigger site distance, and, and that's why that we do comply with Pendot site distance.
And then a final comment, there's statements made about the development shrinking or changing as if that's a bad thing. Was that not done in an effort to address concerns raised by the municipal officials and to satisfy requirements of the municipal ordinances?
Uh, yes, that was one of the major factors for why the, it was redesigned.
So there was a major concession to make this site more palatable for the municipal officials and safer, correct?
Right. Uh, what, what we did was, we had a original submittal where we were showing landslide-prone areas, and some of that area that we are expanding was a little bit infringing into that area, and so we said, "Let's scale it down, so we can stay out of that area."
Okay, thank you. I think that addresses all of the comments or questions raised by the citizens.
Okay. With that then, what we're going to do is close the testimony, at least for the public and the applicant. The council representatives can now address any questions they choose to, to anyone, be it the applicant, or the staff, or any of the residents. With that, Sharon, you still-
I would like to have a break.
Right now? So we'll break, and the next step will be council's questioning.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll take a five-minute break and give her fingers a break, so we'll be back.